May I have your attention? We'll call the meeting of the Missouri City Council to order. We note that all the notice have been posted for this meeting. All council members are present except Mayor Owen, who's out due to a death in his family. If we all stand, we will have the Elkins ROTC, Air Force, to present the colors. And the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Thank you all very much. You may be seated. (coughs) (inaudible) 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 Danny, would you come down, please? (inaudible) 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 This morning, the presentation and recognition, Danny has asked to recognize Ed Gibbons for his service (noise) (laughing) for his service as a United States Army Air Force veteran and his active membership in our community as a commander in the local American Legions. And Danny is going to do this presentation, so if Mr. Gibbons is here, would you please come up?
Good evening, sir.
Hello, Danny.
It is my great honor and pleasure to join the mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, all the city council, to have the privilege to honor a very special person who had served our country during World War II in the US Army Air Force. I was not there to witness that, but I believe that he had done it with honor at his doing right now. What impressed me the most is that with the age of nearly ninety-four years old, year young, he's still very active serving our community as the vice commander in the local American Legion. I've seen you and your comrade in action. You had a garage sale, tried to raise funds, trying to help each other, help all the veterans, and even give scholarship to younger generations from a ninety-four-years-old veteran.
We try.
You have my respect and admirations. I think you are something that we, the younger generation, should follow. We appreciate you with respect. And I also know that we, our very own Councilman Don Smith, is also a veteran, so would you please say a few words?
Thank you.
I'd like to congratulate you and honor you, but I know you in a different way.
Yes.
Years ago, Ed took a young person under his wings when you were with Sealy, was it?
Yes.
And took the time to just sit down and explain to me how things are really done, and I really appreciate that. I mean, we're going back some thirty-five, forty years.
Yeah, right.
But I'm a member of the same post that you're a member of, and I really appreciate your guidance and the method in which you lead us. Thank you very much.
You make a good student.
(laughing) And instantly, he calls me Sonny all the time.
May I ask Vice Commander to say a few words? I think it's very nice to hear some words of wisdom from you.
Well, people expect ninety-four-year-olds to have some wisdom. I haven't found it yet. All I can say is, if you go by the Ten Commandments, what more is there? And I'd like to follow that policy myself and encourage the young people to become active, as obviously you people are, or you wouldn't be here. But it's up to you people to pass the word on to others who aren't here, who need to become active, because we are in a crisis in this nation today, and we need input. And the only input's going to come from you being active. Thank you.
Last question. How many books have you written? And are you still writing now?
Yes. I was a Boston policeman for ten years, and it gave me a crime background. I was a night officer and saw a lot of crime, so I started writing novels. I have to say I'm self-educated, because I flunked English in high school, had no training, but I went on to write six novels, and I'm on my seventh one now. And they are based on crime that is factual and fictionalized. And I still like to write. I spend four hours a day, seven days a week, at the computer, and that's my baby.
Salute yourself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of Danny, this is signed by Danny. This is a certificate of congratulations for your service. And here's a gentleman here also who wants to make a presentation to you as well.
Well, Ed doesn't act ninety-four, so I'm not quite sure he's ninety-four. I think he's been fooling us for years, but we appreciate his dedication and service to the American Legion Post to ninety-four. And in gratitude, we'd like to give you his flowers.
That's beautiful. Thank you, Green.
Take a picture right over here.
Oh. Would you like to have one with all the council? They would love to have a picture taken with you.
Oh, anywhere at all, where you want.
They're gonna just stand up.
Get in the background.
Let's put a shirt guy on in front of me.
Well, yeah, we've been in that block before. You said it, I did.
Like throwing things away.
Boy. Can you see her, bud? Come here.
All right, here we go. Ready?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Ed.
This made my day.
Made my day.
Had a little flavor to this meal.
Ms. Jackson is going to come to as the president of the Suburban Houston Fort Ben Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority.
Right.
And she's going to address us briefly regarding Violence Against Women Act.
You can come around on the side, so you can fix the picture.
Thank you.
It was a sorority joke.
To the Honorable Mayor Pro Tem Jerry Wyatt, Mayor Allen Owens, the Missouri City Council, citizens and members of Suburban Houston Fort Ben Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. I am Sylvia Tiller Jackson, President of Suburban Houston Fort Ben Alumni Chapter. Delta Sigma Theta is a public service organization that currently has over nine hundred chapters, both internationally and nationally, and we've been serving now for one hundred years. We've been on the front line for one hundred years. Our chapter is one of nine hundred chapters worldwide and one of six chapters here in the greater Houston area. We tout a membership of over three hundred and thirty members, a college-educated women, and I come to you on behalf of our chapter to speak to you about the Violence Against Women's Act. I come to you also not only as a president, but I also come to you as a woman, a mother, a wife, and an attorney of the Texas Bar. So what we're asking of this community and of this council is to support us in coming out with programs for the promotion of the services that are necessary, that are protected in the Violence Against Women Act. As most of you all should know, the VAWA, as it's often commonly called, was reauthorized as a law on February thirteen, two thousand and thirteen. And we come before you seeking community partnership. We want to underwrite and promote the necessary services that will implement the planning strategies contemplated and authorized by that act. Specifically, we want to develop programs that improve the safety and reduce the recidivism by developing coordinated community outreach. As most of you should know, the program calls for a coordinated effort between police, attorneys, communities, community involvement, women's groups. It's a coordinated effort. We are commonly known as the boots-on-the-ground, all right? We tout a membership of over two hundred and fifty thousand women. We are used to working on the ground. So when we come and reach out to you, we're asking you to take our boots and help us put some money and some time behind it, so that we can actually have an effective and implemented program. We also want to focus on the needs from the act that address the underserved communities, including creating forums for legal relief for battered immigrants and for those that abuse. As you know, the act addresses those issues of women that are abused and takes them out of being the victim, but makes them the victor. So we would like for anything that the city council can do to partner with us to make and implement the programs that are contemplated by VAWA.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Oh, yeah, this is gonna look nice, my white shirt and all these red blazers, huh? Just tell us where you want it.
There you go.
Is Valerie Marvin here? She took off work to come. City employee. We are going to hereby proclaim March twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, from eight-thirty PM to nine-thirty PM as Earth Hour in the city of Missouri City. And Valerie is going to come and tell us what this is all about.
Well, thank you very much. This is one of the many efforts led by our staff-run Green Committee, thanks to the overwhelming support of City Manager Ed Brusart. The Green Committee looks for all kinds of opportunities to improve recycling or other green efforts throughout the city with staff, as well as to get into community and support green efforts there as well. The Earth Hour is an opportunity for everyone worldwide to participate in shutting off lights and using as little bit of energy as you can for that one hour. And we're encouraging city residents to participate in this, and maybe if that doesn't work out for you, maybe you can find another act of greenness.
I painted a table green today, does that count?
Thank you.
Okay, we want to recognize our purchase and risk manager, Charles Oberender. Would you come by with Charles? Wes? This is another one of our employees who is moving on to somewhere else. Charles, I've been knowing Charles for twenty years, so that tells you how old Charles is. But we're going to really miss him and his purchases ability. This guy has saved the city a lot of money, people, a lot of money. And that has helped us to be able to do more things with the limited amount of funds that we do have. And hopefully, the city manager knows he's got to find somebody just like you. Wes?
Well, you kind of said everything I was gonna say. I wrote down everything I was gonna say. Yeah, I was gonna... But, like the Mayor Pro Tem said, Charles has been here twenty years. He came in February nineteen ninety-three, and he's been the purchasing and risk manager for the city. And he's decided to move on to another chapter of his career to work for the Texas Community College Association. And he's been a loyal and dedicated employee for all twenty years. He's also a certified professional public buyer, and over the last twenty years, he's done many things to benefit the city. A few would be that he implemented and cultivated the purchasing card program here at the city, where last year, in two thousand and twelve, our rebate was a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's free money. He worked with the legal team to streamline the purchasing contracts and administration of the contract process. He has written many, many operating procedures that have improved our efficiency and consistency of purchasing control. He's respected by his peers, because I know that, because they call for his references or for his advice. And he's also willing to assist them, or at least he has been willing. Charles has also been elected to many offices in the local, state, and national purchasing organizations that he belongs to. And we in the city will miss him greatly.
George, would you like to say something? You can. It'll be my turn.
Well, twenty years ago, Dorothy Nixon, who was our finance director at that time, gave an old country Aggie boy from across the river, West Fort Bend County, an opportunity to come work for the city of Missouri City. I believe the population here was maybe around thirty-five or thirty-six thousand people at that time. And I became the first and only purchasing manager for the city here. An awesome opportunity that I have unbelievably enjoyed over these years. I tell folks that I wish everybody could enjoy getting up and going to work to a job they love as much as what I do. And after twenty years, well, an opportunity has come that's given me the opportunity to do something different in the same line of work that I enjoy so much. And so I'm looking forward, already started working for the Texas Association of Community Colleges, setting up a cooperative purchasing program to help the community colleges like HCC and WCJC to save money. Wes had mentioned one of the things I did here was had to write policies and procedures. And one of those things kind of had to do with enforcing the rules, so everybody's always fussing at me for enforcing the rules. And one of the rules was, you weren't supposed to wear blue jeans to work. Well, hot dog, I don't have to abide by that rule anymore, so the old country boy is back. And I think the other rule was something about keeping your face shaven, but I see I'm gone a week, and it's just all gone to pot already, Ed.
You can pretty relax yourself there.
But nonetheless, I really appreciate everything the city has done for me, and, you know, I hope that y'all are able to find someone that has a passion for saving money, like I have always had. And my lovely and talented wife, Linda, she can definitely testify that I want to save money every chance I get. But again, thank you very much for the opportunity. Thank you for council for supporting me all these years, and I've enjoyed working with all of y'all. Thank you.
Charles didn't know that I did this, but I did call his new job. And so when he gets there, so you'll be wondering why people are doing this. Everybody's gonna be holding on to their pencils. And I also told him to stock up before he gets there. You're gonna miss him. Thank you.
You can take your money.
Good luck.
Well, one other thing, last night, my wife had to go see George Strait. So we went to concert with the City of Humanity, there are eighty thousand people over there. One of George's songs was Cowboy, ride somebody. We'll... Cowboy, ride...
Thanks for getting you for a little bit longer.
We're going to have a presentation of the city of Missouri City two thousand and twelve year-end review done by Stacy Walker, our Director of Communications. Did I get that right?
Mayor Pro Tem, city council, staff, visitors, our team worked together to produce this video, which showcases the successes the city has had over the past year, and we hope you enjoy it.
Greetings. This year, we promised you that we would keep our commitment to build two new recreation facilities that all citizens would be proud of, and we did. Right now, we're standing in your premier new city center at Quail Valley on La Quinta Drive. This first-class facility is well-equipped to host special occasions for your family or your businesses, and we look forward to seeing you here. Not only did the city meet the challenge for this project, we also delivered your new state-of-the-art recreation and tennis center on Cypress Point Drive. Thank you for your support. In two thousand and thirteen, we'll continue to provide you with excellent services and programs. Now, take a look at some of Missouri City's other great accomplishments this year.
Missouri City continued its march of excellence in two thousand and twelve with an array of successful fiscal, civic, business, and public safety accomplishments that kept the Show Me City on the list of the state's and the nation's premier municipalities. Safe streets, best budgets, thriving companies, dynamic diversity, pristine parks, and A-plus amenities remain hallmarks of the city and have an impact on its infrastructure projects and retail and commercial sectors. Showcasing the richness of our cultural, educational, and economic strengths, a groundbreaking Rice University study this year found, Missouri City has surpassed Houston in diversity.
Our diversity brings different ideas and traditions to the table, and we are united in the direction of our community's future. With twenty parks, two championship golf courses, first-class amenities, and rich historical traditions, we encourage everyone to discover Missouri City.
Additionally, Money Magazine and CNN Money ranked Missouri City one of two thousand and twelve's top-ten most affordable cities in the nation for home buyers. We remain a premier location with scenic neighborhoods, low crime, top-rated schools, and expanded quality recreational opportunities. We all know that Missouri City is a special place, and this honor reinforces what those of us who live here know. As we move forward, our synergistic relationship with our families and business partners will continue to make Missouri City one of the best cities in America. And when it comes to living healthy lifestyles, we're up to the challenge. Residents and staff formed a winning partnership to earn a second-place honor in the Healthy and HEB Challenge, a statewide initiative aimed at getting Texans fit. Another recreational accolade was earned by the award-winning Quail Valley Golf Course, which hosted record rounds again last year. Avid golfer ranked the Eldorado Course as the number-one best value under fifty dollars and number-two among courses in the category of top-five intermediate priced thirty-six to fifty dollars. And the magazine ranked the La Quinta Course number-two among courses in the category of top-five value priced thirty-six to fifty dollars. Strong fiscal management earned the city a double-A rating for its general obligation bonds and certificates of obligation, a high rank based on sound budget policies and procedures that give the city a bright financial outlook for the future. For more than twenty-five years, the city budget and a comprehensive annual financial report have been recognized annually by the Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada for their detail on city services and programs and the city's financial condition. And for the second year in a row, Missouri City has earned a Gold Star Award for financial transparency and online reporting from the Texas Controller of Public Accounts. Proactive public safety programs protect, educate, and engage citizens, often providing a glimpse into the work of our first responders, who put their lives on the line to keep us safe. The Missouri City Police Department hosted a series of safety seminars, including a citywide crime prevention meeting to ensure the safety of families and property. And this year brought a significant first, as the fire and rescue services hosted their first annual open house. Hundreds visited fire station number one and experienced firsthand how to handle a fire hose, learned about lifesaving equipment, watched a vehicle extrication demonstration, toured the firehouse, and practiced fire exit drills. Another highlight was the Missouri City Police and Fire Academy graduation. The class of twenty-seven is now qualified to join the Police and Fire Auxiliary and Citizens Response Team after completing a free six-week training program in which they learned about the dangers associated with fighting fires and solving crimes. The importance of Missouri City's public safety investment in commercial areas also is demonstrated via the new police mini-station on Texas Parkway that is dedicated to keeping residents and businesses safe. Continuing to build a sustainable business base is critical to future growth and development. Missouri City's continued commitment to private-public partnerships was honored with a prestigious two thousand and twelve Community Economic Development Award from the Texas Economic Development Council. In making its decision, TEDC cited Missouri City's team effort in partnering with a greater Houston partnership, the Fort Ben Economic Development Council, Fort Bend County, Center Point Energy Economic Development Group, and Water Control and Improvement District Number Two, as the second-largest water bottling company in the United States, opens its doors in Lakeview Business Park. Niagara's Missouri City Plant is expected to be fully operational in the first quarter of two thousand and thirteen. In the nearby Beltway Crossing Complex on South Gesner Road, another major company is preparing to open its doors. Ben E. Keith Foods will complete the first phase of its five-hundred-thousand-square-foot facility in the first quarter of two thousand and thirteen. When complete, the company, which was honored by having Beltway Road renamed Ben E. Keith Way, will be the city's largest employer. Other new companies choosing to locate here during the past twelve months include Twin Star Bakery, Southwest Electronic Energy Corporation, Fort Bend Brewing Company, Warren Alloy Allied Fitting, Stream Realty, and Bimbo Bakeries USA. And to create an ongoing dialogue with the business community, the city has launched business briefing breakfasts. These monthly meetings focus on economic growth and development of the region. Infrastructure improvements were a priority city-wide. A major accomplishment was the official opening of the city's new fifty-million-dollar regional water treatment plant, the largest capital improvement project ever undertaken by the Show Me City. This project was the result of an unprecedented level of cooperation among forty government and private-sector groups. It was designed to meet regulations set by the Fort Bend Subsidance District, which mandates that the groundwater withdrawals must be no more than seventy percent of total water demand by January one, two thousand and fourteen. And it won the Texas Public Works Association's Project of the Year Award for environmental projects at least twenty-five million dollars, but less than seventy-five million dollars. Other infrastructure upgrades included raised median constructions on Highway Six and Tex... These monthly meetings focus on economic growth and development of the region. Infrastructure improvements were a priority city-wide. A major accomplishment was the official opening of the city's new $50-million regional water treatment plant, the largest capital improvement project ever undertaken by the Show Me City. This project was the result of an unprecedented level of cooperation among 40 government and private-sector groups. It was designed to meet regulations set by the Fort Ben Subsidance District, which mandates that the groundwater withdrawals must be no more than 70% of total water demand by January 1, 2014. And it won the Texas Public Works Association's Project of the Year Award for environmental projects at least $25 million, but less than $75 million. Other infrastructure upgrades included raised median constructions on Highway 6 and Texas Parkway. The Texas Department of Transportation managed these mobility projects that improved safety for motorists and pedestrians. The projects included the installation of new traffic signals and six dynamic message signs along Highway 6, and the installation of new turn lanes along both roadways. Implementation of the $2.8-million intelligent transportation system to help synchronize traffic signals and manage traffic flow citywide. A showcased Missouri City Monument Wall was added to the entrance of the City Hall Complex, which has been revitalized with the addition of a new LED sign and landscaping. The monument wall is the latest of several new ones that now grace our major thoroughfares, helping to brand and beautify our area. And the installment of flashing yellow left-turn signals. The installation of those traffic signals throughout the city earned the Public Works Department's Traffic Operations Division the in-house Project of the Year Award for 2012 from the Texas Chapter of the American Public Works Association. The signals help reduce traffic congestion, increase safety, and cut harmful emissions. The city's new first-class amenities, the city center at Quail Valley on La Quinta Drive, and the Recreation and Tennis Center on Cypress Point Drive opened their doors this year and are receiving rave reviews. As Fort Ben County's premier events venue, the city center has hosted dozens of functions, including weddings, business meetings, brunches, tournaments like the 2012 Fort Ben Chamber Challenge, and an official ribbon-cutting ceremony. The city center is located adjacent to the award-winning Quail Valley Golf Course, which is now part of the First Tee Program.
Quail Valley Golf Course is one of three locations for the First Tee of greater Houston. This program teaches children life skills through the game of golf. Currently, additional funding is being raised to construct a learning center dedicated solely for the purposes of the First Tee Program. This program teaches youngsters nine core values such as honesty, integrity, and responsibility, and nine healthy habits such as play, community, and family.
The state-of-the-art Recreation and Tennis Center continues to draw attention to, with new members joining monthly, and local and regional organizations hosting tennis tournaments at the facility.
The Recreation and Tennis Center features the latest cardio and weight room equipment, basketball and volleyball courts, batting cages, multipurpose rooms, and tennis courts. The center was featured in the August edition of Athletic Business Magazine. Additionally, the Parks and Recreation Department has daytime and evening recreational programs, provides numerous special events throughout the year, and maintains and operates 20 parks with a total of 393 acres.
The Edible Arbor Trail features groves of trees and shrubs that produce edible fruits and nuts. It was recognized as an innovative project last year by the Texas Recreation and Parks Society and received an honorable mention for on-the-ground projects from the Houston-Galveston Area Council. Another 2012 parks project that has been popular is the expansion of Oyster Creek Trail. The 2.31-mile trail, an outdoor haven for residents who enjoy a scenic hike, bike, walk, or jog, underwent a revitalization that added a paved bike and pedestrian trail along Oyster Creek Bayou between Dallas Avenue and Cartwright Road. And improvements made to the Cartwright Road Bridge extended Oyster Creek Trail under the bridge and connected it to the existing trail south of Cartwright Road. Citizen collaborations are a major priority for city staff, and annual traditions helped us form lasting bonds. These successful events helped engage more citizens, building a strong sense of civic pride. The Missouri City Juneteenth Celebration Foundation celebrated its 10th anniversary with a focus on families and their core contributions to our communities. The July 4 Festival was a fantastic celebration in Buffalo Run Park, full of fun and fireworks. Thousands of families gathered to see the sky light up with color at dusk. Children also enjoyed moonmarks, a rock wall, and a mechanical bull. Neighborhoods across Missouri City hosted national night-out block parties, featuring good food, fellowship, and fun on the 29th Annual Observance of the Crime Prevention Initiative. The 4th Annual Operation Thanksgiving Stuff the Squad Car put the unity in community, as Show Me City citizens, businesses, and staff partnered to fill 15 police patrol cars with canned and non-perishable food items to assist area families in need. The 29th Annual Snow Fest Festival drew more than 5,000 to the City Hall Complex and featured a tree-lighting ceremony, the world's tallest snowman bounce house, a snow hill, a toy drive, and Santa. The Snow Fest Parade drew hundreds and featured colorful floats and local bands. In 2013, Missouri City will provide our citizens with excellent programs and services. A committed city council and award-winning staff will progressively move forward into the future, ensuring the Show Me City's ongoing success. We encourage you to stay informed through the city's websites, the Citizen Newsletter, homeowner association meetings, Missouri City Television, and 1690 AM. And as the city partners with the community to continue our successes this year, high standards will continue to be set and met in the Show Me City.
If I could, I'd like to recognize Stacy and her staff for putting together a real quality presentation. It really highlights all of the major accomplishments that we've encountered here in Missouri City in 2012, and also the hard work that all the people and the staff have put together to make these programs work. So again, thanks again, Stacy, and to your staff for presenting Missouri City in a great light. So, thank you.
I think Andrea too. I think she has been an outstanding photographer everywhere. They just capture that moment.
Well said. We'll move to item four, is a public comment. And this is a time, if anyone would like to say anything that's not in the agenda item. I have one person who did sign up to speak, Sean Johns. You know, this is a time that you get a chance to speak. We do not respond to...
My name is Sean Johns. I live at 3923 Point Clear Drive. I have some prepared remarks, but I don't give speeches well. I'll just say from the heart what I have to say tonight. I'm gonna reiterate what the video just said and what you've been getting emails and phone calls about. First of all, I want to thank this council and the staff for the job they've done. The yielding yellow left arrow, I wish there were more in the city, frankly. As one who's been on 1092, looking down Highway 6, turning into Quail Valley for three or four minutes, I get frustrated when it was red, waiting to turn, so I'm thankful for that. Recently, some people in the newspapers spread some misinformation about the emergency recoup costs, and just like this council in the past has addressed the golf course and CNA Plantation ETJ, I have the utmost confidence that this council and the staff will address that issue and communicate it in such a way that it's obvious, that it's well-intended, and will actually help Missouri City and not hurt it. Finally, and most of all, I want to thank the council and the staff for obtaining and retaining Judge Deborah Champagne as presiding judge for municipal city court, Russell Sanders as our fire chief, and my friend Joel Fitzgerald Senior as our police chief. Thank you. God bless Missouri City, the state of Texas, and the United States of America.
Thank you, Sean, for your comments. I can't address his comments, but I will say that I don't think the judge was going anywhere, and the police chief, nor the fire chief, but we do appreciate those comments. We'll move to item... Item six is the... We have no staff report. So we moved item six, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move or approve?
I second that with one exception, one correction.
Do you have to remove an item from the agenda to discuss it, or you have to...
On a million minutes. I have corrections on a million minutes.
But you have to remove it from the...
Then I move, we approve item 6B.
Is second 6B?
Second, yes.
Okay. Councilman Marshall moved to approve item 6B, seconded by Councilman Wynn. Let's vote. All in favor? There's no discussion. Okay, we'll go back to item 6A, the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
We have to get a motion and a second.
I move that we approve the minutes. Yeah, I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes. I like on the minute to reflect that, the reason that I vote no, because I insisted that we choose the construction company that had the following three things: the lowest price, the quickest completion times, and number three, equal qualification, which the company that we voted for is not.
Do the mover and the second accept those corrections? Say yes.
Yes.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
I'd like to... This is new to me. This is... How does that work? That's...
Um...
So we just make the amendments at the next meeting?
Is this from a procedural standpoint?
Yes.
How it's accomplished? From the amendment standpoint, as the mover and the second did accept the minutes, the minutes will be amended at this time.
Thank you.
Assuming the vote is passed.
All in favor, approving the amendments, is corrected? It's passed unanimously. Item 7, public hearings and related actions. There are no public hearings. Appointments... We're going to do this in two separate swoops, A and B, but we're going to instead appointing the presiding municipal court judge and authorizing the execution of agreement and document related to Deborah Champagne. So when we approve this, we're also appointing her and approving the contract at the same time. Is there a motion?
Move or approve?
I second.
Been moved by Eli Cat, seconded by Wynn. Any discussion? All in favor? Passes. To consider appointing associate municipal court judges and authorizing the execution of all agreement documentation related heretofore, this both is appointing and approving the contract for Robert Regner and Robert Rosenberg. The motion?
I move.
Been moved by Councilwoman Smith, seconded by... What's your name? No, I'm joking. Emery. All in favor? Passes. Okay. There are no authorizations for nine ordinances, item 10A?
An ordinance granting to Progressive Waste Solutions of Texas Incorporated, Texas Corporation, the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of waste to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing for severability.
Can we get an explanation that will save us some time? This is doing the same thing we've done for Republic for the other two existing contractors in the city, is I understand.
Correct.
We found out about these through the process of getting contracts in place throughout the city. We found out that these people were operating within the city that we weren't aware of.
Did we find them, or did they find us?
A little of both. And through the process of Republic contacting them to say that it's time, they believed them to be residential, but under this, with multifamily, we classified that as commercial... or, excuse me, as residential, not commercial. And that's when we found out about them. They advised us that they had had those accounts. So these two companies are now seeking franchises within the city.
The motion?
Move.
The move?
Second.
Second. Discussion? I do have some questions about this. When did they start performing service? We had a cutoff date for all contracts, for all vendors in the city. You know, so when did they start?
They have been providing service previous to, or prior to us implementing the service.
And we put out public notices, and we printed them in the newspaper, and now we're gonna do a contract. I don't think we should do it. I mean, that's no different than the notice that we gave all the other people that did comply.
Well, we will have these instances where we did not know they existed.
Ignorance of the law is no excuse. We put out the notice, the other people complied. These people didn't comply, so why should we give them a contract? Just throwing this out.
Councilmember Wyatt, during this process, this franchise does reflect a retroactive backpayment of the fee, rather than any sort of prosecutions for operating in the city without a franchise. As you may be aware, the city was on a hyper-expedited process to get this accomplished, and the city staff opinion is at this time that, given the willingness of the applicant to execute the franchise and to play the retroactive feedback, that that would accomplish the same purpose.
When we originally went out for contracts, we were not on an expedited process. We may be for this 5%, okay? We had one subdivision that had somebody using, they couldn't use anymore. Okay?
Several of those.
Okay? This is not right. These people need to either go to WCA if they're in the WC, or to Republic. We should not even give them a contract.
Well, I have a question. During our communication period, did we communicate through HOAs and MUDs as to who their contractor was?
We talked to them. We had collected as many as we knew about, and this one, we just did not see.
So since these are multifamily housing units, which don't fall under either one of those two categories, is that how they got missed?
Yes.
But didn't they have some obligation to come forward, just like when we published the notice and we tell other people that you didn't find it in the notice requirement? We had a group of people from Quail Valley who were very upset that they lost their provider. Yeah, I think these people should... I mean, whoever they're servicing should be serviced by our prime contractor, and we shouldn't even be doing this.
I just want to make sure I understood you. You said because we were in this hyper mode to get this done, staff has recommended that we forgive them for their tardiness.
Make an exception.
And make an exception? Is that what you said?
That is correct, and this is not part of... The type of service these entities receive are not the standard residential city service that we have with the six different options. This is dumpster service. So it has the characteristics of commercial franchise, but it's not covered under the city's Commercial Franchise Award, because it's not commercial. It's residential service.
Well, since we've been doing our comparison based against what the city's residential rate is, how do we even compare these two?
There is no comparison. This would be...
So is our original ordinance of conversion procedures, is that lacking?
No, it's inapplicable to this particular circumstance, and when the city staff produces the expectation to move forward with requests for proposals for the start of the new process for 2015, that they would be encompassed during that time.
Are we at an illegal risk if we omit these, not let them award them a contract?
Good question.
Can I ask that?
I say, good question.
And I can certainly address that in open session or in executive session if the council prefers.
Open session. It's not a closed-session item.
They do have an existing contract at this time. The city's not in a position to be providing this type of service, and it would be my recommendation to continue to honor that contract and move forward with that process at this time.
We don't have a provider in place that can provide this service?
I'm certain we could renegotiate our contract with Republic to provide this type of service, but our contract with Republic does not provide for this type of service.
But that's okay. We have a contract with them. We don't have a contract with these people. And we're doing this... The whole garbage thing is a city initiative, and I don't think we should be addressed by people who lately come Johnny, who wants to now get in or just now been discovered. When, you know, if I go and do something out there and don't get the right permits and everything, no, God help me. Okay? Because telling Judge Champagne, for example, that I didn't know, is probably not gonna buy me a whole lot.
But the problem is that we have the rules set in place that a conversion to a city contract has to be done in residential... city contract has to be done in residential if they are over our residential rate, and we have a commercial contract that applies to all commercial property. And this is falling in between those two, correct?
Correct.
Because in our current contract with any of our providers, including Republic, we don't have a rate for multifamily. Is that correct?
Correct. We don't have a group set aside for that.
I'm sorry?
We don't have a separate group set aside for multifamily. We therefore called it residential.
And so, but we can do that though.
So, do we, as I'm going back to my question, do we need to amend our original residential contracts to have this multifamily rate in it so that if anybody comes here, they have something to compare it to of whether we are, you know, they convert or they're not?
If council desires that, however, I'm not a solid waste expert on the type of dumpster service, but I suspect that there are different levels of dumpster service that are necessitated, and I don't know that we have all the permutations to be established within ordinance.
Presently, we don't, but...
We could ask Republic to provide for us. What is their pricing?
We could, but some...
And have you establish your price to beat.
But bottom line, we could simply say, we're not gonna have all these other services as a city. We don't even have to address this, negotiate this, we just make a decision. You know, and if we're going to, I mean, it's kind of like we just had a discussion about all the utility districts. Now, we're gonna have all the garbage places. You know, so, you know...
Let me, Jerry, ask the question again about the legal risks, so I can understand. Ask the question again.
Well, she heard you ask.
And I would recommend that council move forward with the execution of this franchise agreement.
I just want to make sure that was clear.
What, if we did something and denied this, what kind of disruption in service would we be, or would these folks at the multifamily residence be experiencing?
Well, we would have to get with Republic, to get with these people, figure out who they are first of all, and then work with them to get their service re-acclimated or restarted, because others would have to pull their cans at this point, if that's the direction we go. So, there could be some...
Bottom line, there would probably be a disruption of service.
There could be, yes, sir.
What happens is this company just go away and still get dumped in our lap. Same difference.
Then we will be notified that the service is gone, then we could insert them.
Well, I need to get a clarification here.
Thirty-one, twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fifteen.
My clarification is that the current dumpster service that we have in town is Republic and commercial.
Yes, sir.
Correct. They must do service with multifamily housing somewhere else elsewhere than Missouri City, right?
They do.
So, do they have a set price for that, or how's it done?
Yes, they can.
Per dumpster, per unit, per...
I don't know specifically right now, but they do, and they could provide that service.
And that's what we need to get a quote for, so that we have something to compare?
And amend our contract too.
I think we should.
Which wouldn't be difficult. I mean, we have a contract with Republic. We just say, tell Republic they have to replace the dumpster that's currently there with another dumpster.
All right, well, then I'm back to the original question, and why are we considering this different than commercial?
We're considering it different than commercial because it is a type of residential. It falls, you pointed out, it falls between...
Still dumpster service.
True. But as you pointed out, it kind of falls into the hybrid. It is not resident, it is not curbside pickup, but it is still residential pickup. It is not a commercial service. It is a, it is residential.
So, then as we keep pointing out, we're not experts in this. Why didn't our commercial provider tell us about this?
Let me do this. Do we have a, we need a motion?
I already made a motion.
You made the motion, seconded, and I haven't forgotten.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I really think, I'm not gonna vote for this. I don't think we need another. I think we got a vendor in place to sit on each side and get this expanded.
What's the staff's recommendation, though?
Staff's recommendation is to go ahead and approve the agreement for this one and the next one with the retroactive payment.
Well, I made the motion, but I still think I'm making the suggestion that we need to re-look at the original contract to include this gap. I mean, this is a gap here.
You don't have to vote for it just because you made the motion.
No, that was a suggestion for future...
Don't we also have to take a look at what the current rates are? Through this company versus what Republic would?
We really have a tough time in doing that because they're all over the board, and number two, right now, we don't know who has service with whom, as far as this level of service goes, this type of service.
Let's back up. When we originally went into and said, and when the citizens told us they wanted us to get into the garbage business, and we went out for the first time, and the condition that we put out for the first time was if your garbage was lower than the city's basic price, you, okay, that's over with. That's gone. You don't keep driving that one unless somebody in the original groups' price goes above the city's base price. These are newcomers. These people didn't even participate originally.
That guideline was set on residential, curbside only, single-family residential.
You can throw all that in. The fact of it is, we need one garbage collector. We have a garbage collector, and that's what we should continue with. That will give us better control. It would ensure that we have quality. It'd ensure that we have file up, and we only have one person to call if we have a problem.
Because if not, there was no need to go to this.
Yeah.
Because we have WCA as well as Republic.
I'm not disagree with you, but there's nothing to compare it to. In our contract, we don't have a rate for them to beat or not beat. That's one, I agree, but the other part of that is that this is a hybrid thing. This thing is a little bit different from the rest of it, and we just didn't address it. So, what do we do? Yeah, so, we just penalize them?
The only thing that's hybrid done is the difference is one is an apartment, and one is stop and go on the corner. That's the only difference.
But it's hybrid, right?
But that's the only difference.
That's what I said, Jerry.
But it's all dumpsters, though.
Saying it doesn't fit into the commercial with residential.
I'm sure they publicly fix up dumpsters at apartments too.
I don't disagree with you. I think that the rules, you know, we set the process up and then it'll comply, but there's some gray area here that you need to take a look at. Which was my suggestion, that we fix the gray area, but in the meantime, we need to move forward.
And please remember, I mean, this configuration would be, as to the other configurations of what we're doing now, would go through December of two thousand and fifteen only. At that time, and prior to that time, the idea was that we would have all this consolidated into one, similar to a typical city, and we'd be able to go forward with a full contract of the entire city for all services, just as Sugar Land is doing tomorrow night for a single provider.
Who?
Sugar Land.
So, are we ready to vote? Because I'm not gonna...
Well, I just have some difficulty in not knowing what the price would be, and, you know, are we going to, you know, place an additional cost on some residents because of, you know, this particular situation?
No, it's an apartment.
This is, they shouldn't be changing their rates. We're just giving them a franchise agreement.
Right.
No, but if you eliminate, if you don't give them the contract, and you go to Republic or whoever it is, how do we know that the rates are gonna be lower or higher?
We don't.
We don't.
Because Republic hasn't given us a quote on this type of service. Do we have to move, again, I sound like a broken record. Do we have to move on this right now?
You do not. Here would be my recommendation.
That I didn't hear.
Well, because we were looking for some action, but I'm thinking, what I'm hearing from here is, why don't we bring this back to council, not this, but let's bring back the ordinance, and have council have that discussion to determine, do you want to include multifamily in with essentially the exclusive franchise, or do you want to have multifamily have a price to beat? And, yes, it would be dumpster use only that we're talking about. Y'all make that decision, then we'll go back and see, we'll talk about this issue.
Then we need to talk to our commercial contractor and our city residential contractor. Bobby, you want to change your motion? I'll withdraw my motion.
And procedurally, that could also be accomplished by a motion to postpone to a certain time.
Then I'll make that motion instead. Sorry, Don.
Don moved that we postpone, and Bobby moved that second. Any discussion on the motion to postpone? My last word is, I think this was motivated for the fact that we weren't getting the franchise fee, and we can get the franchise fee from just like we can get from these people. Not even when we're in this in town.
Wasn't yet that point in, while we were discussing it earlier?
I'm old, Don. I was still thinking.
Well, wait a minute. If we deny this contract, are you assuming that Republic is gonna go back and pick up the franchise fee that these folks owe us? I don't think, you know, Republic will say, well, I don't want to speak for them, but I can't see how they would say, okay, we'll go back and retroactive pick up the franchise fee for services that we didn't provide. I find that hard to believe that this business would do that.
While this is being postponed, we just do our due diligence.
Yeah, that's, well, we need, I think, it sounds like the conversation the council needs to kind of resolve and give action on, which is gonna maybe have to be different than this item, is what do you want to do in regard to multifamily dumpster service? And have that as far as under your contractor, or have that as a franchise, because that, I think, is kind of a part of the, a main crux of the argument here.
And last word, but please remember, what we originally did only applies that at that time. It applies to nobody afterwards. Okay? Prices, anything does not apply to anybody afterwards, only the people that initially were involved. So, just keep that in mind. Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
That was a motion and a second to postpone. All in favor? Passes.
I assume that's the same for the next?
She's got to read it.
You'll have to take that action.
She's got to read it.
Ten B, an ordinance granting to waste connections of Texas LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, the right privilege and franchise to use the public rights of waste to conduct a solid waste collection service business within the city of Missouri City, Texas, providing a term, providing for appeal, providing a penalty, and providing for sevability.
And I move we postpone this until further...
Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor? Passes. Item eleven, resolution?
A resolution of city council of the city of Missouri City, Texas, adopting rules governing the investment of funds of the city of Missouri City, providing for appeal, designating the director of finance to be responsible for the investment of city of Missouri City funds.
Liz?
Mayor Protem and council, this item is the annual review of the investment policy. The only change that was made was an address change for one of the broker dealers on the last page. Other than that, the date of the policy has been changed.
Move to approve?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Ray Shannon? Passes. Any announcements, anything according to the instructions that was outlined?
Yes, yes, I do have one.
From the...
Yes, I do have an announcement from the Economic Development and Relations Committee. A few months ago, Ed, the city manager, Mr. Ed, who saw and I went to meet with the new CEO of Greater Houston Partnership. You know, he would just, he replaced the former CEO of Greater Houston Partnership, Mr. Jeff Mosley. So, I thought we had a good meeting. We have shown our good willingness to continue that relationship, to bring in more business to Missouri City. Is anything that you want to add to that? You think this was a good meeting?
It was. It was, you know, he just kind of newly into the position, and it was good for Missouri City to be there and making a first contact with him, and we've also, we're members of Greater Houston Partnership now. We've always kind of been taking part in it, but never really been full active members. And so, now we do have a membership with him as well.
I think it may not be a bad idea to invite some representative from the Greater Houston Partnership to come and talk with us sometimes.
It's a good idea. Any other announcements?
I just tell you that Councilmember Emery and I attended the National Conference on Marshals and Constables Association hosted by our constable precinct two, Reuben Davis. It was a very nice event. That's my report. So, it's my understanding, in order for me to do any type of report, and I got to look through here and see if one of these topics is appropriate.
Or you can go, this kind of provides an umbrella. If you find, have something else you want to give a report on that's not on here, that's fine.
Wait, Jerry interrupted you. I want to hear this again.
If there's, this kind of provides an umbrella. If there's something that you want to give a report on or announcement on, that'll, you'll be covered.
Thank you.
Any other?
Before we close, I'd like to, I think, mention that, you know, the mayor lost his mother-in-law, so let's keep him and his wife in our thoughts as he goes through a trying time, so.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.